Good evening, everyone. Good evening, councilors. Today is the 28th. Let the record reflect that voting members of Alpiano and Brian DePena, councilors are both here, Mr. Abadou is expected to be here, but he's running a bit late. So would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is by the United States of America, the Republic which stands on my nation's physical liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got a full meeting tonight. Want to sit there?
I'm going to go for my own.
All right. Which we can't do now because we don't have a form. We will shortly. So we have a full meeting. I'm going to take you guys last, audit. Is that all right? It's probably the most longest portion of the evening, I'm guessing. Is that all right?
Yeah, we can take the free cash one first.
Yeah, let's do the free cash one first. All right, is there a motion to take document 7518 out of order? Motion made in second, all in favor say aye. Yeah, I just have it. Document 7518, it's an appropriation transfer of free cash to fund the acquisition of 55 Lowell Street. It's for the sum of $675,000 and was put on the council agenda by Mayor Dan Rivera. Mr. Ryanello, do you want to speak on this at all? And then I know we have people in the audience here who also want to comment, I'm going to give them a chance to comment after you give us some.
I don't have the specifics on this, other than just what it is. I know it's a, to purchase a parcel of land. I think the mayor submitted a memo with the request that probably explains exactly what the, what the need is, so I just know perfectly about what it's about. $675,000 coming out of our free cash account to purchase a piece of land right across a street from the police station and next to the fire station.
Are we engaged at this point with any, are we using that property right now?
We are. The police, I guess it's, we're not using much of it. The police department has an arrangement to park some vehicles there for a monthly fee until we purchase the property. Because the police department parking lot, of course, is jammed.
I mean, this is simply a transfer of money for that. $675,000, I don't know much about this, except a couple of weeks ago, there was an article in the local paper regarding it. I don't know much beyond this, so I'm not sure, I don't know the details beyond that. How do we get to $675,000 for this parcel?
Well, I think there, my understanding is there's a, and I'm not sure if you have a, was a memo submitted with this transfer, but I know it was based upon, there were appraisals done, I think the city had an appraisal done, the owner had an appraisal done, and that's kind of how we came up with the, the purchase price. But if, there should be some documents submitted from the mayor's office, so I don't have those.
So, so all we have is a one-page memo, it doesn't really go into much detail. I'll read it. It's a transfer from free cash for $675,000. This transfer is intended to fund the acquisition of real property located at 55 Lowell Street in Lawrence for the use and benefit of the Lawrence Police and Fire Department. Upon approval, a new account will be created to hold the funds until the transfer is complete. That was from the mayor, Chief Vask, and Chief Moriarty to the council president. So doesn't really go into detail regarding, how do we get to the $675,000? Is this, was the assessed price, is, what, how do we get to that number? Is this the best way to do it? Should we take it by eminent domain? I mean, why, how did we get to this point?
I can't answer any of those questions. I know, well, I know a little something about eminent domain, not regarding this property, but eminent domain is, is not a, isn't very expensive. I just know that from my days in Springfield, so eminent domain's not the way to go, but purchasing the property and for a fair market value price is the, I think is the intent here, and that's about all I, I know about the project, so I would defer to the mayor's office, who has all the data on this.
I just, it's, I'm going to recognize Mr. Piano here in a second, but it just seems to me as though we, somebody should be able to speak more, with more authority on this than you're able to this evening. And I know you're telling that the mayor's office is quarterbacking this, and, but there's no one here for me to ask questions to.
I'm surprised there, someone's not here tonight.
So you really can't answer much more, so I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Piano.
Thank you, Mr. Lepat. So, I mean, I think, one of the things that I was expecting in reviewing this, is not just understanding how we came up with $675,000, but even an understanding of the project, you know, you know, we're buying this property, when would we assume that this would take place within five years, 10 years, 15 years? So I think there's a lot of questions involved, and since we are unable to answer that, I think it might be best to table this item for, till our next meeting.
So I'll entertain that in a second. Before we do, is there any urgency on this at this point?
Yeah, I think they would like to purchase it, so I'd recommend maybe setting up without a recommendation and make sure it can be vetted at the full city council meeting, or if you need to table it, I'm sure we'll make sure the mayor, mayor's office peers at the next budget finance committee meeting.
All right, so what we could do, I guess, is, thank you, so we could certainly table it. Does anybody want to speak on this matter now? You want to speak now, Mr. Russell? Mr. Russell's asked to speak. We typically at these, at this, at this level, we're not as formal on things, so if the people want to speak out, we do, so it's not as formal as the full council.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for giving me the privilege of addressing you on this issue. The esteemed Mr. Russell, I reside 34 Cross Street. This should take about three minutes. I want to comment on the agenda item 7515, which is the transfer of $675,000 from free cash to fund the acquisition of the vacant lot at 55 Lowell Street. According to both the assessors' records and the deeds recorded in Northern Essex Registry of Deeds, Mr. Gorn purchased his property December 29, 2011, for $150,000 bucks. According to the newspaper article, he paid about $5,000 as his last property tax bill. That would mean he's, he has paid taxes on the property to the tune of about $40,000 bucks. So far, he's invested about $200,000 into this property. Several appraisals were done on the property, and the two appraisals were for $675,000 by Mr. Gorn's appraiser and $700,000 by the city appraiser. Mr. Gorn's willing to accept the lower of the two appraisals as the sale price. The city of Lawrence Assessor's Office has assessed the value of that property at $160,800. Several of my questions about the above-mentioned values are, why is there such a great difference in the value between the assessed and the appraised value? That's a difference of $514,200. Also, what properties in the city were used to determine the appraised values? I understand that the appraisals were based on several properties in Newburyport. I don't know how true that is. As a quick note, my property was recently appraised for $175,000, it has an assessed value of $142,700. That's a percentage difference on my property of about 23%, while a percentage difference on 55 Lowell Street is 320%. Why the great disparity in percentage differences between my property and 55 Lowell Street? Next, I bring the question of ethics. Is it permissible for a city employee to sell property to, to the city for what appears to be an outlandish amount of money? I bring up the words that many may not like to hear. Those words are eminent domain, pot, pot I, title XIIII, chapter 79 and its various sections of the MGL. They set out the procedures for taking land by eminent domain. Couldn't the city take the land by eminent domain at a lot lower cost than either of the appraised values? If Mr. Gorn is unhappy with that road, if the city were to take it that way, he can seek financial justice in court. I have no problem with offering Mr. Gorn a fair price, that price being that it doesn't look like unarmed robbery to the taxpayers of the city. Thank you for the chance to address you on this issue. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Russell. All right, so we have a couple of options. Mr. Piano is prepared to go ahead and table it. Budget director is asking if we send it up to the full council without a recommendation. I don't know the urgency of it. There's apparently nobody here from the mayor's office that tells me, I, I'm not sure what that tells me, except that if they were that important, they would be here, and if it was that important, I'd get a phone call, and I didn't get either one of those. So I'm getting the message that it's not as important that we move it up to the full council without a recommendation, because I haven't heard anybody, and I'm not sure if you all have. Have you got any contact from anybody? No? Okay. So I'm either way, I can go either way, we can set it up, or we can have a table, so whatever. Sure.
So, Mr. Lepat, I think that we should table this item, because I think there's a lot, there's a lot of questions that it might be best that we air out throughout the committee process, instead of having it to the full council. I mean, I think it was set down here for us to do our homework, and like you said, I don't believe that there's, it doesn't seem like there's an urgency to this, so it can wait, you know, two weeks until our next meeting. So I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next budget and finance committee.
Motion's been made.
Yeah, I second motion.
And seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. There may be somebody from the mayor's office coming later this evening, we can always take it off the table, so if somebody does show up, we can certainly take it up, so that's how we'll deal with it. All right, so having said that, let's move on. Do you have a preference, Mr. Ryanello, which document you want to take first?
Well, since the, the auditors are here, Dick Sullivan from Powers and Sullivan, certainly, I think they probably should go first.
Very good.
I think their presentation is, is going to take a little more time.
Okay, so we're going to take document in order 6118, so you have the floor, Mr. Powers. Welcome.
Thank you. Also with me tonight is Kyle Warren. He is the manager on the job, and has spent a lot of time out here. I kind of get up here and speak before you folks, but he's the guy that does a lot of the work, so appreciate that he's here tonight. What I wanted to do is basically just tell you how the FY17 audit went. The idea behind it is to give you some insights as to what guidelines we have to follow, what we actually do, how we do it, and the, and just talk a little bit about the results from my perspective, as how the city did for FY17. So I first wanted to start off and say, what guides us as auditors? We have two things that we have to follow. One is called the Yellow Book, and the other one is called Uniform Guidance. The Yellow Book is something that stands for Generally Accepted Government Auditing Standards, and it's required for all municipal audits. It specifies what the qualifications of the auditor is, or has to be, it specifies the continuing education requirements that are necessary. It's much more stringent than just what's called Generally Accepted Auditing Standards. And if you, the first two pages of report, which is the only thing we really own in the report, we make reference to those two standards. So that gets us to the point where this is how we're doing our audit. The second part is Uniform Guidance. And what Uniform Guidance is, is replace what was formerly known as OMB Circular A133. And it basically tells us how to audit your federal grants, of which we had $42.4 million in FY17. And what it does, it requires us to look at every major grant and determine if it's adhered to, compliance associated with it, and also the administration of it, and whether the expenses charged with it were proper. So as part of our planning, we-
And this, which, which binder are we talking about?
I'm on the financial statements, so thicker of the two, it's like 81 pages.
Basic?
Basic financial statements, yep.
Okay.
Yep. And what I was referring to just now was the first two pages, we call the auditor's opinion, and somewhere in there, you're going to see those two things mentioned. So we plan our engagement, taking into account these two things, to make sure that we cover whatever the standards require us to cover. Now, as far as the audit schedule goes, there's a lot of work that has to be done to get an audit of a city this size. We break into two areas. We come in the spring, do things that can be done without being specific to June 30th, and then we come in shortly after Labor Day and do things all related to what June 30th is, where the entire balance sheet is looked at. So to give you an idea, we, in the spring, we look at the pension liability, we look at OPEB, we try to get the budget done, long-term debt. We also do some transaction testing, which I'll talk about a little later. We try to get most of the single audit done if we can, and of course, there's planning. At year-end, we basically get some files that are given to us, that we put into our trial balance software, and we begin, begin the process of walking down the balance sheet. The big items to us are cash, for the receivables. The big items to us are cash, also there is capital assets, of which you have well over 300 million. There's also some receivables, which relates to mostly the MSBA receivables that you have. We basically tie those all to the penny. So we spend a lot of time in the treasurer's office, we spend a lot of time with the accountant, working to see what the reconciliation process is for receivables. We then, of course, perform flux analysis, determine if the expected results we're walking in are the actual results we see, and then we compile the financial statements, which are over 81 pages long. And pretty much, that's what we do as part of our year-end work. Now, I just want to make a note here, before I forget, that every year that we've had the privilege of doing this audit, we've had excellent information flow from the financial staff that you have. In order for us to get this work done, we have to receive information timely, it has to be accurate, and allows us to be efficient. And once again, I'd like to just let you know, there was excellent coordination of all that, in terms of us getting this work done in the time we did it. So what do we test? We test a number of things, like I, when I was talking about the balance sheet, we would call that substantive testing. We also test four different, or five different types of transactions. We look at your payroll cycle, we look at your expenditure cycle, we look at your revenue cycle, we test procurement, to make sure you're in line with 30B, and we also look at journal entries. And those testings range from 25 to 50, depending on the amount of work that we want to do. All that testing basically came out exactly the way you would expect. I got throat loss, if you need it.
Oh, good. Very emotional.
Okay. The, all that testing came out right, which means things were properly approved, things were properly authorized, the posting to the general ledger was correct, and what was paid, should have been paid, nothing else. Then we look down, and we start going down the balance sheet. Now, the big items I'm going to talk about, just for numbers, cash and investments in the city was 81, $88.1 million. Your AR was $34.1 million, and your capital assets totaled between the city and the enterprise fund, 320.
What page do you want?
What page, if you wanted to look at that?
Yeah.
I'd say that's probably page 12? Page 12, is it, is that Statement of Net Assets?
13.
Thank you. Statement of Net Position, thank you. Page 13.
Got it.
So if it starts at the top, you see cash and investments, then you're going to see receivables, then you're going to see capital assets. Those are the three big assets I'm kind of pointing out to you right now. Down below, a little bit, middle of the page, you're going to see the liabilities. Now, you have warrants payable, that's pretty standard. The four big liabilities that you have on that balance sheet is your OPEB liability, which is $196 million, a $21 million increase from last year.
It increased?
$21 million, yep.
We're going the wrong direction.
Ah, you are. It's only going to keep going that way for a while, too, I'm pretty sure. Your pension liability, which was $201 million, which actually decreased almost $10 million, and that's because there were certain assumptions in both the asset valuation and the mortality rates that would change, that positively impacted that liability. You also have debt, which totaled $148 million, split between the city of $87 million and the enterprise fund of $60 million. So those are three big liability accounts, in addition to some of the accrued expenses and accrued interest and other things you'll see on that part of the balance sheet or the statement. Now, I'm going to get into the financial, financial highlights in a second, but just to tell you what the results of the audit were. The first two pages of that report are what we call our opinion, and it's an unmodified opinion. We, it's, it's kind of talks in negative assurance, but it's the best report that you can get by an auditor of the city's finances. It's basically saying that things are accurate, they're not going to mislead anybody, and they're all with, there's a material, within the material, materiality level that's going to make anybody looking at these financial statements understand what the city's workings is. And that goes from not only the financial statements, when you turn the pages, but all the way to the back, which is the footnotes, and then further back, which is called Required Supplementary Information. There was a big change this year, too, I'd like to let you know about. There was something called Gatsby 74 that had to be implemented. This thing, it added about six pages of notes, maybe seven pages of notes, an extra RSI, and what it is, it's basically setting you up for what's going to be implemented next year in terms of Gatsby 75. And what's going to happen is that OPEB liability that I talked about of $196 million, it's going to go much higher. It's going to actually, the full liability, not just the portion that you haven't paid in yet, that should have been paid at this point in time, but the full liability is going to come on the balance sheet. As far as what impact this is going to have, it's, it's going to, it's going to put a bigger hole in your balance sheet, it's going to put a bigger hole in your statement of net position. But it's also been vetted. Anybody who's been looking at these financial statements for a while, like people like Moody's and S&amp;P, they know this information is there, so it's not going to be a surprise, it's just going to put in the front of, in the front of this financial statements, and not back in the footnotes what the actual liability is, and that's what's going to happen. Back to overall results, unmodified opinion. Reporting deadlines were met. I mentioned earlier, information received was accurate and timely. I have no internal control issues to report to you, which is something you want to know about. And finally, one of the things that we sometimes have to do is that we find an error in the general ledger, but we had no, we proposed no journal entries to correct any errors that we saw, which means the information we got was good, and it tells me, because I know Mark's probably going to do a little bit of this tonight, with providing you with contemporaneous information on what maybe the last six months were, or whatever, means the information you get is accurate. Because when I get back to that journal entry testing, we look to see if people are making, if there's mistakes have been made in design, if they're being fixed by journal entries. We didn't find any of that, which means to me, when the transaction's posted, it usually stays there, and that means what you're getting is accurate information. Financial highlights. I talked about pension and OPEB already. It's basically blowing a hole in your, in your, in your Statement of Net Position. You have a negative net position of $187 million unrestricted. That's on the very bottom of that page, that you're looking at, on page 13. And I'm only talking about the governmental activities, I'm not talking about the business-type activities. But it's big, it's known, and it's going to get worse with Gatsby 75 being implemented. On the Statement-
Can you show me where that, the new Gatsby number's going to be located on this?
What, say it again?
Can you show me where the new Gatsby next year, where that number's going to be reflected on this page?
Yep. There should be a, a, a line item on the liability section called OPEB, post-employment benefits, I'm sorry, other post-employment benefits. It's right above pension liability, I believe.
Other post-employment benefits, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, 191 million?
Under non-current liabilities, it's the third one down.
Yep.
That, that, that name, the, the name that it's called is not going to change, except that number's going to be much larger.
Would you go find that out?
So right now, it's 175 million?
I have 191.
It's going to go to $423 million.
What's the number right now, 191 million?
From the 191, right. And if you wanted to see that, if you want to flip pages, it's on page 53 where that information is.
Page 53?
On page 53, it shows the total actual liability itself. Now, this is going to change, because you're going to have a new valuation, but if we were to use that, the valuation that's in there now, that's the number that would appear there. Yep. And there's a schedule on page, there's a schedule on page 55, that you might also find helpful. Luke, slays it out.
So that number, that's the number next year, when we, we meet again next year, we're going to see a much bigger number there.
That's correct.
By how much? Magnitude of two or three?
Well, we're at 191, we're talking how much?
Two and a double.
More than double.
Oh, we have to stop.
Yep, got it.
Thank you.
But as I've been telling my other, I can't talk, I forgot.
One of us leaves if we have to stop, because-
Go ahead. Okay. As I've been saying, and I'll repeat myself a little bit, these numbers have been vetted, everybody knows what they are, they've been actually disclosed in the footnotes prior to Gatsby 74, just a little differently, so people know what's going to happen, it's just going to now be on the face of the, front of the financial statements versus the back in the footnotes. Okay, the general fund. Now, what I like to do, I focus my attention on, is if you want to turn to page 62 and This is called the budget to actual statement. Basically, this is how the city runs. It shows what your expected revenues for collections were, and what your actual revenue collections were. It shows you what you appropriated, including carryforwards from the prior year, and it shows what you spent, and what the differences are. Your budgetary performance was very good in fiscal 2017. You showed a profit of $4.7 million, and I believe it's going to be on the secondary page, you're right, probably the second or third column, where it says actual, you're going to see actual results, and then it's going to show the variance, positive or minus. Mr. Lepat, I think if you looked at the other page, you'll probably see it.
On page 62?
Go look at page 63.
Actual budgetary amounts?
Yep, and on the bottom, you're going to see excess, excess or deficiency of revenues over expenditures, and that number's $4.7 million. And what-
I'm not seeing it.
What the results are.
I'm not seeing it.
Oh, okay. Okay, first column on page 63.
Okay.
Down the, third, third line up from the bottom.
Okay. $4.7 million?
$4.7 million.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Counsel.
And the, the results of this were two, two factors. One is revenues, actual revenues, came in better than expected. So if you look at the third column on page 63, you're going to see variance over and under, and in the revenue section, it's going to be $3.8 million. That's a positive on page 63. And you go up to the top, and there's a, there's a series of numbers there that totaled $3.8 million, and that's, that's your positive results of collecting more than you actually budgeted. Further down below, you also see an amount for total expenditures of $1.8 million, which means you underspent your budget by $1.8 million.
Can I stop you right there?
Yep.
So our budget team has done a really good job with our budgets for the past several years.
I agree.
And they've consistently have been very conservative in their revenue projections, which ultimately, at the end of the day, means that we have, we keep building on our free, free cash reserves.
Yep.
Which is not a bad thing.
Right.
This is maybe a policy question. The concern is that we have a lot of needs that we need to deal with in our regular budget, that we should not be taking out of free cash, we bake into the budget, there are personnel costs, for example, that we can't use free cash on, but we need to, if we wanted to hypothetically beef up inspectional services, if we want to do more enforcement of our city, of our codes and our laws, et cetera, et cetera. Can you provide an opinion as to how far we can go to, before we start going to a danger zone with respect to forecasting revenues? Over the past few years, you said we had $3.8 million of excessive revenue-
Extra collection, yep.
-in our budget, and we've been doing this, I'm not sure, I don't have the numbers for the previous years, but apparent, we've been doing this now for some time.
It's about the same. It's about the same, although I will tell you, just so you know, you, when, if you're asking the question, is, is that maybe too much of a surplus?
That's a good way to put it.
A significant component of that was tax liens. Tax liens were one, almost two million dollars of that three-point-eight million dollars, and motor vehicle excise contributed the remainder of it. That's not unusual, because what we've seen is, there's been, just because of the way the economy's been going, and I've been seeing this, maybe not to this magnitude, but you have a very sizable budget, I've seen motor vehicle excise taxes higher than, that were budgeted, and it's primarily because I think people are feeling better and they're buying new cars. I've seen that just about every one of my clients. On the tax lien side, that can, that can, that'll eventually wane out, that will go away, because right now, you're collecting something like ninety-eight percent of your taxes that you commit. So, I'd be a little cautious in wondering if that three-point-eight million dollars is too much, only because of the two contributors that are part of it. And finally, if I could just give you an idea, three-point-eight million dollars is one-point-three percent of your budget. I mean, you're basically right where you wanna be, you're ninety-nine percent there, so I know the numbers can be significant, but as, as your auditor and how I look at things, I usually do both the magnitude of the number, but compare it to the size of the budget, and I'm not seeing a significance there. And as I walk down to the one-point-eight million dollars, a big part of that was because you did a refunding.
A what?
I'm sorry, it's a, you basically, it's like remortgaging your house.
What was, what was the word of our?
Refunding.
Refunding?
Yes, you refunded debt, and what you did is you got a lower rate on that new debt, and you saved about eight-hundred thousand dollars on that. Now, even if I stay at the one-point-nine million dollars, if I knock off eight-hundred thousand, that's only point-six percent of your total appropriation. So, I guess if you're asking for an opinion, do I think there's, you're getting too close? I would say, I don't think you are, you've had some, you've had some positive results here, I think that they're explainable to me, and when you look at the percentages they are, I mean, you come in, you came in at higher than ninety-nine percent of your budget in terms of what you estimated you would spend versus what you actually spent, and because of the tax liens, I think you had a bet, more, you weren't that far off from your expectations, except for tax liens and motor vehicle excise, and that could change, that could change. So I, I'm, I know, I'm saying this was a good year, but I wouldn't use it as a trend to look possibly for culling out other stuff yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that, just to give you an idea, I talked about real estate and personal property taxes. This has improved significantly. I, I went back to two thousand and ten, when I said, what were you collecting, your commitment to what you collected? You were at eighty-nine percent, which is terrible.
What year was this?
Not, two thousand and ten.
Yep.
In two thousand and seventeen, you were at ninety-eight-point-one percent.
Say that again, so in two thousand and ten, we were what percentage?
Eighty-nine percent.
And now, two thousand and seventeen, we're at what?
Ninety-eight-point-one percent.
Wow, okay.
And just to give you, at fifteen, you were ninety-five-point-nine, last year you were ninety-seven-point-two, this year you're ninety-eight-point-one. So you're getting better. And I, if I, when I see the combination, the percentage of the commit, collections to the commitment, that means somebody's doing their job.
When you say two thousand and ten, was that an aberration, was that an outlier, eighty-nine percent?
It was actually, it was actually lower than previous years, I just stopped at two thousand and ten.
Okay.
Now, there's also something called unassigned fund balance, and that would be, if you were flipping your pages, that's on page sixteen. That currently is seventeen-point-four million dollars. It's an increase. I went back to two thousand and eleven on this one, you had a five-point-nine million dollar unassigned fund balance in two thousand and eleven. To give you another perspective, that's about six percent of your budget. In two thousand and eleven, it was two-point-five percent of your budget. Unassigned fund balance is basically the fund balance that you can use for almost anything. It's not purely, it's not purely aligned with free cash, but similar to it, okay? It includes the stabilization funds and things like that. But six percent is about where you need to be, and what the GFOA says you really should be at. I forget what the bond rating is here, Mark, but the triple-A communities have about twenty percent fund balance. I don't know if that's ever gonna be possible here, but, but six percent is healthy, which means that you can ride some things that come up that you may need to ride out. I mean, the free, even like the free cash vote that I heard you guys talking about earlier, that you can do that because you have six percent of unassigned fund balance. Real quick hit on the enterprise funds. Water and sewer operations had a profit, four-point-four million dollars, which is kinda consistent, because it's, it's paying off its own debt. The airport showed a profit of three-point-six million dollars, but that's primarily because they received a three-point-six million dollar grant for the runway improvement project that's going on. So essentially, if you pull that out, they broke even. Parking did a little better in seventeen than sixteen, it still lost one-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars, but in sixteen, it lost one-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars.
You mean we lost that?
You, you had, you had a loss. Your P&amp;L had a loss for the enterprise fund, for the parking. If you look, that would be on page... Two, twenty-two. I'm sorry, that's twenty-one. If you look at the parking enterprise column, and you go down to the bottom, you're gonna see a negative one-twenty-six.
Parking, on page twenty-two?
Twenty, twenty-one. Third column from the left.
Okay.
And it's just saying that you lost money.
Operating income ninety-six, ninety-six thousand dollars deficit?
Yes.
Is that what, that's what you're looking at?
What, I'm looking at the comment, it says change in net position, and if you follow the four-point-four to the three-point-six, you'll see negative one-twenty-six.
Negative what?
Negative one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, seven-eighty.
Negative one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. Okay, I see it.
Okay, good.
So what are we doing about that? So, so we're, we are, we are dipping into the, we are dipping into the parking enterprise fund to the tune of one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars, at least in this past year. So our revenues from parking is not able to meet our expenditures.
That's essentially what I'm seeing from these financials.
And how much, how sustainable is, I mean, I guess, is, is, I guess, as a question for the budget director, are we supposed to be, are we supposed to have a, are we supposed to be meeting the, the cost of the, the parking with the revenues?
If I may, we do meet the direct costs of the, of the operating garage, it did break even last year, but the, because of the other post-employment benefits and some of the other charges we have to report on a, on a full accrual basis, it shows a loss. We are doing a parking study, we have an outside firm, one of the overseer's suggestions last year was to get an outside firm, take a look at all our parking needs, so that study's almost done, we expect that late April, maybe sometime in May, we hope to have our, our parking recommendations, and that'll help us drive the, the enterprise fund.
So we're gonna, so just so I'm clear, the overseer is gonna give us recommendations on how to?
No, the overseer asked us to get, hire an outside firm, so we have a firm called Nelson Nygaard, who's an expert in parking in municipalities, and they're, they've been here for the last several months, you know, studying traffic patterns, we had some outreach to the community, what would they like to see in parking, and it's a whole, a parking for the entire city, it's an extensive study, and the overseer requested that we put that in the budget last year, which we did, and so that, that's been ongoing since late fall.
When do we expect that report?
We expected a late, I would say, probably May, but possible late April, but probably more like May.
Okay. And will we see that report when it's issued?
Oh yeah, it'll be a city-issue report, it's, you know, we meet every other week, and, you know, there's a, a conference call we have every other weekend, and we meet with the consultants on a regular basis to keep the project moving.
Is that something you'll send to the city council for this committee to review?
It'll, it'll, it's a report that, when, when issued, it'll be on the city's website, it's not a, we can certainly make a presentation to the city council, and, you know, the consultants will make a presentation to the public, whatever we want them to do, they'll do when the report's ready.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's fine. So that gets us through the enterprise fund, and I did wanna talk about the pension fund a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. Which is reported along with the OPEB trust, but that's on page twenty-three, it's, actually the net position's on page twenty-three, the operations are on page twenty-four. Your pension fund did a lot better this year than it did in last year. There was a twelve-point-eight million dollar increase compared to FY sixteen's increase of two-point-one million dollars. The increase is attributable to you getting more interest and dividends, but there was a significant also net change in the market value of investments, which is pretty much what everybody's experienced as of twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen. Currently, you're funded at forty-six-point-seven-five percent, which is a two-point-seven-five percent increase from the prior year, and at the current pace, you expect to be fully funded by twenty years from July first, two thousand and sixteen. Two more items on the balance sheet, if I can hold your attention, thank you very much, is capital assets, always worth talking about that a little bit. You had eight-point-five million dollars' worth of governmental assets added, city hall annex, two-point-four, you bought fire truck equipment, had building renovations of two-point-four. Chapter ninety, which is the new infrastructure that goes into the streets, the streets, was one-point-three million dollars, and there was also renovations at the school and some repairs to the tune of one-point-one million dollars. Water and sewer added eight-point-seven million dollars of capital assets, mostly for infrastructure, not few meters, but mostly infrastructure. And the airport added six-point-one million dollars, which is part of its ongoing runway improvement program.
We're paying, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to keep with you.
That's all right, page, is, actually, focus on page twenty-three and twenty-four for that information. Twenty-three shows the net position of the pension fund at one-hundred-and-ninety-five million, and that's first column, last number on that page.
Mm-hmm.
And then, on the next page over, on page twenty-four, after contributions, down below it says net investment income, and it says interest and dividends, the change in and fair value of assets, those, that's the two things I was mentioning earlier. And the, the big, the big thing here is you did add eight-point-eight million dollars of value to the assets, because market value went up. Okay, water and sewer, I'm sorry, debt. I mentioned it was a two, twenty-four, there was a refunding, the total of that refunding was twenty-three-point-four million dollars. The significance of that you should walk away with is that it decreased your overall future debt service by two-point-one million dollars.
Wow.
Which is pretty good. Also, this thing generated a premium of two-point-three million dollars. So paying attention to this kind of thing is, is really good, I mean, you've got a good FAA, but your treasurer's doing the work too. We continue to have the deficit borrowing, you know how you roll the bands, roll the bands, roll the bands? That went down one-point-two million dollars, which is basically because we paid down twenty-two-point-eight and reissued twenty-one-point-six. So, what I've kinda talked about here, I tried to give you an idea, is major balance sheet items, significant things I should, things you should evaluate in the performance of the city, and if, if I was gonna have you walk away with a thought, I think you should say the city did okay in FY seventeen. You met, you met your goals. Again, we talked about the numbers and the size of the numbers, but when you compare it to the actual percentage of the budget, they're very small, but there was, it was, it was a healthy process, and, and as you mentioned earlier, I think the budget process here is pretty sound, there's a lot of effort that goes into it. And I am an accountant, I'm a CPA, and I think conservative budgeting on the revenue side is the way to go. I've seen communities in the past, not so much now, but in the past, drive the appropriation by overstating what they thought their revenue collections were gonna be. And you guys don't do that, you guys bottom-up budget, you say, this is what we've gotta spend to meet our needs, and you see if the, if the revenue stream can support it, and for the most part, that's what I've seen, this year and also in the past. There's another report I want to just quickly talk about, won't take more than one or two minutes.
Sure.
It's the report on federal awards. And what that is, is you guys received forty-two, spent forty-two million dollars' worth of federal awards expended in FY seventeen. We have to test, we have to test some of that, eighteen-point-two million dollars is what we tested. We looked at the child nutrition, special education, CDBG, the airport improvement program, and the capitalization grants for clean water. They range from ten-point-six million dollars to two-point-nine million dollars in total expenditures, and each one of those grants has to be tested separately. The, the federal, they give us guidelines to go to, with every grant that comes with it, there's a CFDA number associated with each one, and that CFDA number is also associated with certain procedures that are necessary. Some are general in nature, which go across the board, but every single one of them is specific. So we do all that testing, very simple saying, there's three unmodified opinions in that report, which means we say the report on federal awards is stated correctly, compliance with laws and regulations was made, and all the administration of the major grants was appropriate. Bottom result, no findings, no questions cost. Overall, the people who are responsible for managing and accounting for your federal awards do a good job. The last report is the management letter. What we usually do is we take a look at last year's report, and then say, what's been resolved, where have there been what I would call significant improvements, and where are some things unresolved or need partially resolved, which means we haven't quite got there yet. Significant to this management letter is, in previous management letters, we had had what was called a material weakness, and that was due to the fact that the city had an overseer, and that meant the state was looking at the finances of the city, and that decided, as they do, that you weren't quite ready to go on your own. Well, the overseer's still here, but I got enough confidence in the way I've seen the city do what it's done since it started this program, I pulled the material weakness, and it's no longer part of your management letter, which is significant.
Say the last part again?
Pardon me?
Say the last part again, what was significant?
I pulled the material weakness from the report.
Oh, you pulled it.
It's not, it's not in the report anymore, yep. And that, to me, is a significant.
Yep.
Elevation. There were three, three other comments that related, one related to chapter ninety reimbursements, get him in on time, you're getting him in on time. We'd actually recommended, it wasn't necessarily a, a, a point that said you had to do it, but we recommended you establish a stabilization fund for compensated absences, which is essentially sick of vacation time. You did, so that point's gone. And we also recommended that you have a dental insurance fund that'd be handled a little differently accounting-wise on the general ledger, that's been fixed too. So I have four resolved points from the prior year's letter. There were significant improvements in two others. One was, and we're still doing some of this work, was over student activity funds. An impressed account is something that should be funded to a certain level, and then when it rolls down, you fill it again. They didn't have that, and we recommend, it recommended it be put in, it was put in. We're further recommending though, because we can't say it's all resolved, that you think, we, we believe you should develop more formal policies and procedures as to how to manage student activity funds, and that's still an open item as part of the letter. And then, we recommended the parking garage operations go cashless, you did, we also are aware that there's a review being done, which I think will make it even, make it more, enhance the internal controls over that area even more. I have, I think, six comments that I consider to be unresolved or partially resolved. We're still recommending that the treasury function, put in a new system, automated system, my understanding that's to be put in place this fiscal year. The fraud risk assessment is something that we have standard in every single management letter, except for a few of our clients, and what it's basically saying is you need to document what the risks are, as it relates to the financial reporting particularly, and what the controls are in place to mitigate that. I'm gonna share with you that I think they're okay, I think that what they're, that the internal controls are fine. However, not being documented means that we don't really know what's being done, and you as counselors can't determine from, from what you don't know whether or not it should be, your risk tolerance should be a little less, meaning that you should have more controls. So that, that's what that one's about. We believe in reconciliations, reconciliation is probably the most strongest internal control you have. Tailings is not a big item on the balance sheet, but it's still not being reconciled, and we think that should be done. We also recommended capital asset accounting, maybe using some automated software, developing some policies and procedures, particularly to replacement. One of the things that happens in a lot of communities is we know what the adds are, we continually know what the adds are, but we don't know how much should be taken off the balance sheet, and that's a part of what that comment's all about. School lunch operations still are doing what we think is not correct. The control over the cash count is not as good as it could be, because the people who have the control over the, actually counting the cash, have control over the system that counts for it, and that can't be done. And we also like to see a better control of avoided transactions, because my understanding is the person who's counting the cash can also avoid the transactions themselves, and that has to be changed. And finally, there's something called, we call documentation of internal controls. I mentioned uniform guidance earlier, it essentially went into play last year, fiscal sixteen, I should say, and what it means is for federal awards, the uniform guidance And what it means is for federal awards, the uniform guidance says, is supposed to use the controls used by COSO framework, which means there's several, I put them all, we got them all in there, these are the things you need to consider in processing federal grants. And if somebody came in and wanted to do a uniform guidance audit, meaning like a program, at a program level, they're going to ask for where, what documentation of internal controls are. And there are none right now that I'm aware of. Now, there are good controls out there because the people at the programmatic levels know what needs to be done, it's just they need to be documented. Now, I don't know what would happen if somebody came in and said, we don't see any internal controls here, we're going, I don't think they're going to pull the funding, but it's our way of saying to you that we know this needs to be done, and we're recommending that it be done. And it can be very, it doesn't have to be by every, it doesn't have to be specific to the program, it can actually be across the board for all federal grants. This is how we do it, these are authorizations going to play, this is when we file our F R ones, just a, it doesn't have to be more than ten pages, but it needs, we're saying it needs to be documented because uniform guidance says it needs to be documented. And then I just have the informational comment, which is Gatsby seventy-five. And we talked about the hundred and ninety-one or hundred and ninety-six million that's on your balance sheet right now, and I do have the number here, it's going to be, if you use the number that was in the financial statements in the footnotes, it'll be closer to four hundred and twenty-three million dollars in FY seventy, FY eighteen. Okay, that.
Not bad, Mr. Powers.
Is that?
Not as bad.
No, and, you know, we get, we get through a lot of stuff, it takes us about five hundred hours to get this done, but we get it done pretty good.
So I got a question, this is an outlier question. Back to revenues for a second. So, no secret, our city is tremendously reliant on state aid.
Yes.
And to a lesser extent, federal aid. Stats that I just, we're bringing up while, earlier today was a comparison between nineteen eighty-one and two thousand and sixteen, which is the most recent numbers that I could get from this report. State aid as a percentage of total revenue in nineteen eighty-one was thirty-five percent. State aid as a total, percent of total revenue in two thousand and sixteen for Lawrence was seventy percent. I'm sorry, sixty-seven percent. So it went up from thirty-five to sixty-seven percent in, from eighty-one, eighty-one to two thousand and sixteen.
Right.
Which is a significant increase. Our state aid per capita went from two hundred and thirty-four dollars to two thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars, so it's gone up tremendously. As an auditor looking at the books, knowing that we are so reliant on state aid and trying to forecast whether or not what we're doing here in this city is sustainable, what kind of reaction, when I read those figures and numbers that you probably already know, what's your reaction? And is that, is that nugget at all reflected in the audit?
Um, is that reflected in the audit? No. I think what you should be, we should be looking at is, I would, I would compare you to some of the other cities that we do that have similar demographics, you know, similar issues. I got, I counted actually seventy-two percent of state aid, but that doesn't matter. To have that much state aid is common for cities like the city of Lawrence. And there's other cities like you that are on the, we, some of them are our clients, some of them aren't, who have the same amount of state aid. What's the expression? State gets the flu and Lawrence gets the pneumonia. You know, that's, I remember somebody telling me when I first started doing that here. Is there jeopardy in that? I suppose. I suppose. But I don't do, I mean, everything I read tells me the state, to the best of its ability, is committed to communities like this. And I'm not, and they'll do everything they can not to dwindle the aid or not have the increases as what they maybe had been in the past. But it's, I don't consider it a risk from a standpoint of the audit itself. I really don't.
So the second question is, is because the administration has been fairly conservative in its tax policies, where it has not reached out to the full two and a half percent. One year, it went to, I think, just a portion of that, and another year, in the last four years, it did not at all increase, it just had new tax growth, but nothing to the two and a half.
Yep.
From your perspective, knowing of our city and its reliance on state aid, what is your, is, is that going to be at all included or, and, and at least mentioned, or do you have any comments on, on that posture?
Well, I, you know, I'm going to walk a little delicately on this one. Because one of the things that we as, we're kind of like a gatekeeper, but we're not policymakers. There are communities out there, clients of mine, who tax as much as they can and leave nothing in the levy. There are communities out there that do exactly what you just said the city's doing. I don't have a, a position one way or the other. I know it sounds like I'm dancing, I'm really not, because I don't, I just know that there's various reasons why some communities do the full, full boat and some communities don't. And I, and I would say they're probably different in every single community. So I apologize that I'm not giving you a really good answer, but I don't have a position on it one way or the other.
And the last thing, just, just to, just so we understand where we fit in the context of the entire Commonwealth, I'm going to mention all these cities, and I'm going to tell you which city is the number one as far as state aid is concerned. Brockton, Chickapi, Fall River, Fishburg, Holyoke, Lawrence, Leamester, Lowell, Lynn, New Bedford, Pittsville, Springfield, and Totten. We're number one when it comes to the amount of state aid that we're getting as reflective to our revenue.
Do you have Lowell in there? It's because I
What?
I would have thought Lowell would have quite a bit, too.
I do, yep. Lowell is a, state aid is, as a total, percent of total revenue in two thousand and sixteen was forty-seven point two percent.
That's all? Okay. All right. All right. I would have thought maybe Brockton, too, but I guess not.
And Brockton is forty-eight point two. So we're, we're number one, we get the gold medal in the Olympics of state aid.
Right.
And we had seventy, sixty-seven percent.
Yep.
I'm not sure that's good or bad.
I, I don't know either.
Yeah.
Trying to think, what would drive that?
It's his formula?
Yeah.
Generally, our state aid is formula-driven, so chapter seventy-eight is a majority of the state aid that we do get.
Right.
And it is for, all formula-driven, based on the municipal revenue growth factor, which is the inflation rate, and also the income per capita, and the property values in the city of Lawrence, all that is put into a formula, and they come out with the foundation budget, which is how the chapter seventy-eight is, is, is distributed. So we get a largest chunk of that because we have one of the poorest income per capita in the state. And a lot of the other grants that we get, Title I grants, for example, the school department gets a lot of grants for operating schools, and again, is formula, most of that money is formula-driven. Community development gets some formula-driven grants, that's, you know, so a lot of our state aid, state and federal aid is formula-driven.
I just want to bring that up, this is rare that I have a chance to talk at this thirty thousand foot level on this issue, so let's say thank you for your diligence. Is there anything else you want to add? I'm going to open this up to other, I, I kind of just took over the questions here, and maybe other questions?
No, I've, I've completed the presentation to this point.
Okay.
Any questions? You don't have to.
No questions, just a statement.
Sure.
I, I, I think to, to your point, the question that you asked, as far as state aid, I would say probably the biggest chunk of state aid we get is for our schools. And even then, we're not, we're not getting enough. So in some, some schools, some cities, they have, you know, anywhere between twenty thousand, thousand, twenty thousand per child that, that they have, with state aid and what the city puts in, I think in Lawrence is something like fourteen or, or fifteen thousand. So if, if we want to ensure that the education that our kids are getting in Lawrence is comparable to a Waltham and to an Andover, that the money has to come from, from somewhere. And I think that, you know, one of the things that we should definitely push our state leaders is to see more go into, go into education. I had a question regarding the presentation, as far as some of the, the comments that should, recommendations that should happen. And I'm wondering, like, some of these, these recommendations were, were there since last year, and I'm wondering, so like, what usually is the process of cities? Because some of them say that no significant progress has been made.
Right.
Is, is it typical for this to occur in, in different cities and towns?
Yes, it is. I will tell you right now, the fraud risk assessment is probably the toughest one to do, because I would recommend that you hire somebody from the outside, like a consultant to do that. Abandoned property, I think, could be easily fixed, it's just a matter of getting a handle on the recording of the receivables themselves. I also believe the same with the capital asset accounting. If I was going to say to you where I would maybe focus some attention, I'd say focus some attention on the student activity controls and also on the school lunch operations. Those are, for me, in this management letter here, I hope I'm not getting you into, you know, but those are the two issues that I think could cause problems. I'm not saying they are problems, but they could cause problems. We did a, a little bit of a project here, maybe a year and a half ago, on student activity council, and we had several findings, and, and we, I know some improvements have been made. It's just not where it needs to be just yet. And the same thing, in terms of our understanding of what's happening in the school lunch operations, that's something that I truly believe should be addressed, or given some attention.
And a question to Director Iannello, is this something that, that needs to be addressed on our end or on the school department's end?
Uh, the, the school department, we did sit down with the school department and reviewed the student activities issue, and what we did with Powers and Sullivan is we had them, I think, a couple of years ago when the issue first came up, we had Powers and Sullivan actually audit, get on a schedule to audit all the student activity programs. So the school department committed to that. And then also, I think what, what Dick's referring to is some of the practices that they recommended, they just haven't fully implemented them yet.
That's correct.
But the school department is actively aware of their student activity funds, they, they have a, a better system in place than they did a few years ago, but there's still some improvements that need to be made. As far as the school lunch program, I think they had, there's some, just the way the cash registers and have access to the cash registers, there's still, is some area of improvement. I know that the school department does run a pretty good school lunch program, but it's just one of these things that they should put a little bit more effort on, and we'll ask them to work with Powers and Sullivan if necessary to get some better recommendations in place. But the school department's aware of the comments, I know they're working on it, direct us to the school department, see how, how successful they've been.
So do you think that they're, they're making consistent progress on this?
Particularly the student activities they have. They have, because they really, a few years ago, they really were, didn't have anywhere near the controls they have in place today. It's just that they're, they just haven't gotten there yet. They still need to improve, I don't know what the, how many schools have been, schools that have student activity funds, I should mention, that's one of the first things they did, was they eliminated most student activity funds. They closed, I think there's only eight or so now, and I think they probably had thirteen or fifteen a few years ago, so they got, eliminated some from schools that really didn't need them. So there are only eight, and generally, the high schools generally do need student activity funds, they have a lot of activities at the high school level. But some of the smaller schools, they found they didn't, really didn't need those student activity funds available. So I know they've done a lot of progress, I would, we could certainly ask the school department for an update, but I do know that the audit reports are submitted to the school department, they actually, because of some of the grants, as, as Dick mentioned, and the schedule of federal awards, they actually do visit the school department, see some of their controls. But as far as student activities and, and school lunch, I think there's some improvements, as Dick suggested, I know they're working on it. I just don't know whether they've implemented all the suggestions yet.
Director, my, my other question was around abandoned property. It, it just seems, so when the report talks about tailings, is it a specific type of abandoned property or just abandoned property in general?
Uh, tailings are the unclaimed checks and the outstanding checks that are out there, and there's a particular process that the, you know, in private industry, you have to turn those abandoned properties over to the state, or the, somebody doesn't cash a check, after some, a period of time, you return it over to the state. Municipalities, however, have a, a different statute, that if we follow the statute, the city gets to keep those uncash funds. We have to do everything we can to find out who didn't cash their check and why. Oftentimes, it may have been replaced, maybe somebody passed away, somebody moved, there are some employees, I'll refer to them as mattress stuffers, they don't cash their checks, and then when they, you know, they have plenty of money, and once in a while, they go to the bank and they want to cash all their checks, and maybe they lost them, or maybe they got washed in a, in a washing machine, and they don't know how many checks they didn't get. But, but it's an initiative with the treasurer that I've, as soon as she gets, and she's been here about a year now, there's other priorities I've given her, but this is a priority that we said in this fiscal year, we'll try and follow the Mass General laws and get these tailings taken care of in this fiscal year.
Is, is it, is there a reason that it's not sort of all up to date? Because the, the, the format that we're using, like, are we using like a, a, a certain data system that's not correct?
No, it isn't that, it's just that there's years of, of, of old records that are, are caught in the tailings account, and, and getting the details of what that, that entire amount is, is, it's never been done. So it's, it's, you know, ten, twenty years' worth of, worth of probably accounting errors or, you know, actual, many of it is unclaimed checks, but trying to get a, an accurate list of what those are, follow the Mass General laws, which means we have to post it on the website, there's all sorts of, I'm not familiar with off the top of my head, but in general, I know we have to post, we have to send letters, we've got to put postings on the website, on any checks that we have found that are unclaimed. And, and, and once we follow that process, we can take that tailings account balance and put it, bring it into the general fund revenues, if you will.
Do we have an idea of sort of what the general, like tally of unclaimed checks we have?
I'm not sure if it's in the, yeah, but I, I think it's, I, I seem to think it's a couple million dollars, that's for sure.
Wow, okay.
It's a lot, it's a lot, there's a lot in there that's just been, you know, I don't know if it dates back twenty, thirty years, I have no idea when the tailings account was actually handled, but what happens is certain funds go into that tailings account every year, depending on what gets unclaimed.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. So I guess we're going to send this up to the full council without a recommendation. Do we expect, Mr. Powers, do you expect to be at the full council meeting as well?
Next week, I believe.
Very good. Yep, sixth, Tuesday?
Yeah, Tuesday night.
Okay. So that, that's fine. And, and all the counselors have copies of the audit report?
Yes.
Very good.
And one from the council office and one from the clerk. And it's posted on the website for those that want it.
So just so, just the councils, if you didn't hear that, it's in the city council office, the clerk has it, and, and it's on the website as well. So, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there, is there a motion to send this up to the full council without a recommendation?
Still moved.
Motion made?
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always know the ayes have it. Look forward to seeing you next Tuesday, Mr. Powers.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're going, we're going to switch gears a little bit, we're going to head back to the table matter item. The mayor's office is here. So is there a motion to take document number seventy-five eighteen off the table?
Chair LaPlante, what about seventy-eighteen?
We're going to come back to that.
Okay.
We'll come back. So is there a motion to take seventy-five eighteen off the table matters?
Still moved.
Motion made?
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Abel Vargas, sixteen Haverstree, good evening, committee members, thanks for the opportunity to come before you on this matter. What I have handed over to you folks is a, is a, is a memo, two attachments that reference a, an appraisal and a PowerPoint presentation that speaks about some of the future plans that we have for the, the future of what would be the police station and/or a public safety center. So the, the motion before you is to, to, to approve funds being transferred from free cash over to a fund to purchase fifty-five Lowell Street in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The, the two documents I want to, I want to highlight first for you, for, as, as a point of reference, are the, these two documents here. So it's one appraisal and two appraisals, they're in your packet. The reason why these two appraisals are important is because we, we identified a need to buy this property based on our future plans to build a new, new police station and the requirement of having parking to sustain and to be able to have the capacity for that new development. We had a conversation with the property owner, and we came to an agreement that it would be prudent for each of the parties to do their due diligence and hire a professional appraisal, appraiser, to do the necessary work to get us to a number that was reflective of the market. Those two documents are before you. There, where it says real property services, that was, that was done for the city. The other document by Menco Corporation was done on behalf of the property owner. One appraisal came in at six hundred and seventy-five thousand, the other came in at seven hundred thousand, the one, the higher number was an appraisal that was done on behalf of the city. The lower appraisal number The lower appraisal number was done on behalf of the property owner. After negotiations, the agreement was made that we would take the lower of the two numbers, which is a six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, um, for the purchase of the property. Do you have a question?
I do, but I'm gonna wait till you continue.
Okay. Um, the, the other doc, the other document that you have before you is a PowerPoint presentation and what that represents is, is kind of a, a summing up of what we've done in terms of assessing the, the necessity for a new, a new police station and other nuances associated with it. There is one slide that looks like, like this. It's, the, it's a rendering, uh, it's a pretty picture of what it would look like. Um, that, that, that rendering is important cause the, the parcel that's immediately to the east of the fire station is the parcel that we have, we're talking about today. And that's identified as, as parking spaces for the, for what will be in the future, uh, the public safety center and/or the police station, uh, pen, pending on, on the amount of funds that we get appropriated for this project. I think, I think as a community, we've had a co- conversation throughout the last couple of years, maybe even the last decade, about the condition of our police station and those conversations have landed us in a place where in order for us to make moves towards that, the city has to take, uh, a financial position to make sure that we, we get those funds. It's not enough to say, stay, to your point earlier, it's not enough for us to say stay, just pay for everything. We have to figure out a way to have skin in the game and, and play our part to ensure that, that we're well positioned to take advantage of any opportunities that come before us in the terms of funding from our state partners. And I think this, this here represents, um, it represents the city's, um, not only capacity to, to pay the money because we have the free cash for it, but also our commitment to see this through. This property and it's been covered in the paper, was purchased in two thousand and eleven by Dr. Gorn for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And right now, he's, he's, he stands to sell the property for six hundred and seventy-five and many would say that's a windfall, we're giving him a free ride. Um, but I think, I think we should have purchased the property back in two thousand and eleven, but we had, we had issues that we just weren't in a position. We had just borrowed twenty-four million, I forget the exact number, um, in deficit spending, um, and we just weren't in a position to take advantage of, of the, um, of, um, of being able to purchase the property. Second thing is we, we really had no indication of the future value of properties in two thousand and eleven. There, there was a resurgence of property values, but the values of properties have just come up, uh, in a substantial rate, um, in comparison to what they were in two thousand and eleven. The last thing I'd like to know in, in all of this is that this is an opportunity that we have to take advantage of. And when, when speaking with the, speaking with the appraisal and getting a sense from, from the property owner, this, this gentleman was offered eight hundred thousand dollars to sell this property to a, to a nonprofit user and he's, he rejected the, the offer. Um, and speaking to the appraisal, if we were to do housing on this parcel, the value of this property would be in excess of a million dollars, cause if you put housing, the property would be more valuable if it was zoned for that. So just, just give you some perspective of the valuations and what could be, um, in terms of, of, uh, any, uh, use that's allowed by right and what is possible if they go through the process of zoning, so on and so forth, on, on that, on valuations on this parcel. So the six seven, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars may seem like a lot, but considering the market, considering the, the, the unique, um, the unique role that this parcel plays for city necessity, we believe that the, that the, the dollar amount being offered and being put before you is, is a, is a fair one.
So let me start off with a few questions, I'm sure there'll be other committee members with questions as well. So this is a huge discussion, um, I mean, we're, the police station, a new police station has been, uh, has been the, the brass ring for our city for some time and we've never quite gotten there, there's always been problems, funding, finances, a lot of issues, we can never get there. So to talk tonight, like we're at the precipice of potentially getting to that location and this being a fundamental building block is a significant development. And I, it seems like we should, it's, it's more than just the six hundred and seventy-five thousand, although that's what we're gonna be, we're discussing this evening. What we should be talking about is this whole concept of the police, Northern Essex's involvement in this, the, the work, the relationship between the police and the fire for a public safety center. I mean, we haven't had a new police station since nineteen sixty-seven, something like that, or whatever, whatever the year was, and the, the day after it was built, it was already outdated. So it, it, we have been behind the times. So what I think, either this committee or this council needs to have a more, a more, a fuller discussion about this entire project, not just the six seventy-five one parcel, which I know this is what's on the table tonight, but this seems like this parcel is critical in what the city's trying to develop for this whole project. If you don't get this one piece, we're, we're not getting this pretty picture, are we? That's inside here, is that my understanding?
It's a lot more restrictive, yeah. It's a lot more restrictive.
Okay, so this, so this, so this, this is, this vote, or this acquisition is a make or break on a police sta, a public safety center at this location. Alright, so, so now that I've set the table on this, it seems kinda weird for me to just talk about six seventy-five for one thing, but, um, I, so you've heard what I said, I think we should have a, a, a more robust, more open-ended discussion on this and maybe it's at the full council level. I mean, that's probably the place where it should be, it's beyond just here, uh, the four of us. But to your question on the six seventy-five, and I had, I just got this tonight, I don't know much about the numbers, so this is, this is all news, this is news to me, I'm guessing it's for all of us.
That's fair.
Um, so here's the weird thing, the guy, the guy who owns the property now does an appraisal, he, his appraisal is less than the one that we do. What's the, uh, what's the city assessor's assessed value of this property?
Um, I, I don't have that on hand.
Hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred dollars.
There you go.
Does that sound reasonable from your perspective? Hundred and sixty thousand, that's within the?
It's within, within my memory, yes.
Mr. Chair? Sure. So I don't know if that's the number that you're looking for? So the assessed value, so you have a chance, where's that? So, so Gorn, the applicant or the, the seller, in his, thank you, Mr. Piana, uh, says that the assessed value is a hundred and forty-four, I'm not sure what year that was in. Date of valuation, December eighth, two thousand and seventeen. There you go. So, so that's interesting. So, so our assessor says it's a hundred and forty-four, this, and I realize there's big differences, right, but then he goes and he has his own thing and it's a, it's seven, it's six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and that's a huge, that's a huge delta, isn't it?
Right, I mean, it's, the, right.
It's, it's, I think it's important for, at least me, maybe my other colleagues aren't in this, to be reminded why there's such a big difference. Why, why is that?
I think Mark can answer that.
The, the assessors, uh, didn't go out to that property and actually do an assessment of that property.
Okay.
It's just, you know, they have, uh, fourteen thousand parcels or so in the city or fourteen thousand tax bills. They don't go to every single parcel, but they, uh, they review, uh, every three to five years, they visit every single cycle, so there are every property and actually, uh, do an appraisal of that property based on income streams and so on. That, we actually paid somebody to actually go out, hey, what's the fair market value of that property? And that's why the, the two professional appraisals, which is what the, our assessors are professional appraisals as well, but we didn't ask them to specifically do a appraisal on that property. We wanted an outside, uh, company to do that and that's why the appraisals are, the, the two outside appraisals are fairly close versus the assessor's appraisal, which is, uh, I don't know when the last time they visited that property and, uh, and what information was used by the, uh, new assessors, but we could ask the city assessors to review the assessed value or those assessed, uh, fair market value reports, uh, and see what the difference is. But, but I know the assessors do not get to every single property and do a, an appraisal like that was done.
So I guess you've just led me to the question, which is why can't we have our own assessors, who's our own, our own in-house professionals go there and, and do that? Maybe that's?
You have two appraisals.
I know. So we have two appraisals, one by a contractor that we contracted out and one by the seller who did it. I'm saying, I get this is what we purchased, or we, Real Property Services, the contractor we did, I'm just asking, why, we have an assessor's office here, why don't we, why, is that bad policy to ask them?
I think I can answer, I mean, I think we could have the, uh, as I said, uh, we could ask our, uh, chief assessor to review those assessments, but, but if I were buying a, uh, if I were selling property to the city, I wouldn't be taking the city's appraisal when I sell you my property.
Alright.
Uh, so you do wanna have, uh, somebody outside the process come in. So I think that's why the, uh, the owner had an appraisal done, the city had an outside appraisal done, so hopefully they could come to a fair market value, uh, determination.
Let me skip to eminent domains, we talked about that briefly earlier, so.
It's very expensive.
Okay, so, so I'm a rookie, I'm pretending I know nothing about eminent domain, except for the fact that it's a taken by the government.
Right.
That's all I know, okay?
And you still have to pay fair market value. So I, I, I've just been, was involved in one from my days in Springfield and it was very, you have, uh, not that there's anybody to relocate, it's a piece of vacant land, but when you, uh, take a parcel by eminent domain, which, which we did, uh, there's, appraisals have to be done, I think we had to get three appraisals, outside appraisals, uh, you know, you're taking somebody's property, so the court is very strict with what you have to do and it, and it's very, it's legal, uh, the legal fees are extraordinary. Um, but i- it is a big process and we would not be, uh, we would not be able to use the assessed value on the city's real estate records. I mean, we could try, but you know, I'm sure no judge would approve that without having some outside appraisal, so the, the process for eminent domain is very complex. I'm sure the city attorney could speak to it, uh, a little better than I can, but I just know from Springfield, it's very costly. It's a, it's a, and it would be a move of last resort.
And is Mr. Gorn, Dr. Gorn, is he still employed by the city of Lawrence?
Uh, my understanding is I think he's, I think he still is, yeah, he still is, I think he's a, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, he's, he's the city nurse, he's officially the city nurse and he receives a, a paycheck for the service that he provides, a physician, sorry, city physician, sorry.
So, I mean, this is a very public process.
Right.
Where anybody can watch this, anybody can sit in the audience and watch us discuss this matter, so the, and observe what we're talking about here. So the question is, is, um, have we checked with ethics about, uh, what, what cautions, what pitfalls, what we need to be mindful of if we are going to purchase a property for a current city employee? Is there potential appearance of a conflict? I mean, and we talk, have we gone through those processes just to make sure that we're, we're in the clear?
I can't speak in definite terms, but we do, I, I could say that our city attorney has reviewed and he's, he's suggesting certain forms be filed and, and so that there are certain steps that have to be taken in order for this transaction to be completed. I won't, I won't speak, I won't speak to indefinite terms, cause I'm not, it's not in my capacity to do so, but we have had conversations with our city attorney, um, and if you were to ask the question, he would be, be able to provide you with some background on that.
So I, when you do something like this and it's very public, uh, there's a lot of misinformation or skewing of things, I think we need to bring this information out as, as much as possible. So if the city attorney has talked to ethics and has come up with an opinion based on the ethics commission's, uh, view on this, we need to see that, we need to see something written so that, so if someone down the road says, you're just favoring this guy, you're, 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 you like him, he's working for you, you're giving him a sweetheart deal, what we don't need is a city for going in this direction is to have that kinda, that kind of, of conflict or obstacle there. If you wanna go forward on this, you wanna make sure it's above board completely all the way. So submitting that information, I think, to this council, I think is gonna be important.
We could absolutely do that, that shouldn't be a problem.
I'm gonna pause for a second and, and take a breath. Anybody else want to have a question? Mr. Piana?
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. LaPlante. So, I mean, I, I think, you know, you brought up some, some good points regarding the ethics, that's one of the things that I was gonna, um, uh, ask about and I think it's important, um, especially like even though I'm sure the due process is being, uh, being done with the, um, with the city attorney, uh, it's important for us to know sort of what that process is, um, and what are the next steps when, you know, when it comes to that, just to make sure that this is all done, straight and narrow. Um, I think, you know, as anyone else that read the paper, um, you know, seeing at what this gentleman bought the property for and what the fair market value is, um, you know, anyone would just look at those numbers and be like, wow, this, this person's coming out and, you know, he's making a lot. And unfortunately, uh, definitely the city should have stepped in at that point and, um, and bought the property, so I understand where we're at right now. Uh, I think one of the things that I find a little disturbing is just with the, um, assessed value. Um, I, I understand how the assessor's office, um, you know, puts the value, but what we're looking at is a property that we were assessing a hundred and forty-four thousand, you know, taking in taxes, four thousand eight hundred dollars in taxes, when we could have been, um, asking for twenty-three thousand. So I think, um, uh, Mr. Chair, one of, you know, a, a point that we could discuss further on is, um, sort of addressing this with the assessor's department, cause I'm sure if this is happening with this property, it's probably occurring with other properties that size. So I think that's definitely something that in the future, uh, we should take a look at. A question I have, um, for you, Mr. Vargas, is, you know, I understand that this, uh, property is essential, what would the project look like without it? Would there be a project without it?
I, it's, I, you know, anything is, when, when you are presented with an issue or a problem to solve, you know, there, there's always ways to solve for problems. Um, so to suggest that this is the only way, you know, we'd, we'd have to figure out another property, we'd have to figure something out, but what we don't want is to, to build out this, this build, these buildings at the capacity we want to build them in and not be, not have parking as a resource. So if it were to be, be built out for the criminal justice program at Northern Ness Community College and a public safety training facility and the police station, um, and it was, it has X amount of people occupying those buildings, if we don't have sufficient parking for those people, it creates another problem. Um, and I, and I, and I know you guys have seen that we're, we're actually renting the property that were in question here, and one of the big reasons why we did that was because the police department was facing issues with, um, parking and being able to locate vehicles, um, comfortably. And having this parcel across the street has allevi, alleviated a lot of issues in terms of circulation, placement of vehicles, things of that sort. So to say that we could do it without it, probably, could we do it comfortably and, and, and meet the, the need, um, required, maybe not, not, maybe not so much.
How much do we rent the property out for right now?
Two hundred, is that a?
Either, it's more than eleven hundred and thirteen hundred.
And, and so I can get that information for you, but it's, it's somewhere between eleven hundred and thirteen hundred dollars, I could get that exact number for you, but it's in that vicinity per month.
Okay, um, wow, there was another, another question there and I just, I just lost it.
Go back, anyone?
Yes, please.
I should have been.
Uh, yes, um, I think the first mistake the city doing, uh, is eight years ago, Mr. Matt Sullivan don't take a action about the property, four years ago, Mr. Willie Antigua don't take a action, but in four year, uh, Mr. Rivera take action about the issue. Many years ago, the city know he need, uh, construction, a new police station, um, State Department. Now I know is that, that the property is very expensive. The city know need doing something, waiting ten year more and ten year more maybe need pay, uh, one million dollar. I know this is, the, the property is very expensive now, six, six hundred seventy-five, six one, six hundred twenty-five, it's expensive for the lot, but in ten year, the city continue need the property and maybe need pay more or maybe another, another company buy the property. I think it's time for take action about the issue. I don't see any combination, you know, and approved that amount. Maybe everybody say this, it's a lot of money now. For me, it's a lot of money, but the city need a property. It's a city doing something for the future, need a property. The city support take the action, uh, sixteen years ago and not doing nothing, now pay more. more. When the city need buy any property, the owner put a high price. Everybody know?
Yeah, I, I would just, just one thing, and I, I appreciate your comments, Mr. De Pena, but in fairness to the past administrations, you know, we're in a position now, and I think Marco Rionello and the auditor spoke to it, we're in a better position now financially to make this investment, versus we were in two thousand and eleven, and perhaps when, when Mayor Sullivan was serving, we may not have been in the same position that we are now. So I think you're right. But, and then, so when I ask, answer a separate question that was presented by Counselor Plant a little earlier, a more comprehensive sense of what this is, and what we're doing, what it looks like, and, so the, the city receive funding through, through DCAM in the, in this, in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars to do a, a, a study before we have you. So this is, this is the, this here is the, this presentation here is the Cliff Notes of what was presented as part of this, this report, but there's a, a larger document that we can make available to all of you, that references all the specifics, all the nuances, everything that went into the plan to, to get us, to get us where we are, to have a sense of what the cost is, what the programming looks like, who our funding partners could be, so, so all that information could be made available to the council, at the full council level, or whatever you'd like it.
When I started my business in Broly, I tried buy a property seventeen in Broly. The offer is three hundred. Couple of year more, I try buy, the owner put it in four hundred. Now I try, it's one million dollar. See later. If I buy it ten years ago, I take a good opportunity. Now it's one million.
Right, agreed.
Thank you, and, and great points, Mr. De Pena. So, so my comments, so one I would say, Mr. Vargas, anytime, at least with myself, that you're asking yourself, is this too much information? Go, go for it. The, the more information we have, I think is, the, the better. It's, it's easier for us to, you know, come up with a decision. All that I would ask is that, I'm a, I'm a slow reader, so I just need more than, you know, a day to, to look at that, that data. So, one thing, and I think you, you started talking about it, and Chair Lepant addressed it as well, you know, it's hard making these decisions while thinking about sort of like the bigger picture. So, you know, we're looking at this project, and, you know, this project might not even get started within this particular administration. Is that, you know, is that correct? So, so essentially, we're buying this property for a maybe that could occur ten, fifteen years ago, years from now? Is that the case, or is this something that we believe, like it's gonna, this is gonna happen a lot sooner than that?
We can't commit to time, the, you know, state funding cycles, they, you know, they, they act on their own. We're fortunate to have a state delegation that has taken this serious, and has made real strides in getting some, in getting some funds committed, at least approved by, at least approved by, by the House, and it still has to be appropriated by the governor, but at least we have a bond bill out there that has gotten the votes both, I think at the Senate level as well, right? So both at the House, at the Senate level, has been approved to receive a portion of the funds, and, and if, and if the governor decides that this is something he feels strongly about, and he decides to make the appropriation, and go out, go out for, go out for bonding, that it may, it's, it's, it's more real. And, and my sense is, it's all momentum, right? So if someone says, you have twenty-five million dollars, then, you know, Lane Glen Community College will be a lot more motivated, and they'll be able to tell a different story to their funders, and the Department of, you know, the, the high, I don't know the agency that administers their, their work, but, but then they have a, a stronger story to tell, and then they could advocate for funds. And then, at some point, as the mayor has said, there's no free, there's no free, there's no free ride, we'll have to come back to the council, likely to, to get some, some, we'll have to borrow some money to fund a portion of this project, because we can't depend on the state to fund it all, we can't depend on the community college to fund it all, we'll have to play a part in funding a portion of this total, this total dollar amount. What that number is, I'm not sure, but we're working towards that.
Do we know when the governor makes his final determination?
Whom?
When the governor makes his final determination.
I would not be able to make pass judgment on that.
Okay. What's, what's the total pri, price tag on the entire project as you envision it now?
So it's, it's, it varies depending on how much of it we build out, and there's a slide in the presentation. If we were to just build the police, the police station...
What's that slide?
It's, um, the second to last. So the, if we were to just do a standalone police station, the number is forty-five million bucks, and if we were to do the, all three functions in one space, it would be seventy point six million dollars. That middle number is, it's, it's a reflection just to suggest that how important it is to do one big project versus try to do two separate projects, because if you were to do them separately, the cost would go up another fourteen million dollars. So it, so the two numbers I would look at is the forty-five million up, up top, and the seventy million dollar down below.
Is the forty-five million the one without the property, or is that the property that we're talking about?
It, it includes land acquisition, so if you look at, if you look at the stat, they, there's a, there's a line item assumed of one point two, one point one million dollars in land acquisition as part of, as part of the whole performance.
So that's buying this property and other properties around it?
Yeah, there's one other property we'd have to buy.
Okay.
If, I'll send, I'll send you the, the entire report, because it outlines which properties we have to purchase, what's the estimated value, it has all of that information and a lot of granularity, and you'd, you'd be able to see exactly what the expectations are.
So, the report you're talking about is the, the one that you received the grant for?
Right, it's, it's, it's the long version of that PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, yeah, I think that, that would be great. Mr. Chair, I think the value of the property definitely is heart-wrenching, you know, sort of saying that we're gonna give up this, this amount of money, especially knowing that someone got it on the cheap. And I think that's just, you know, the case is going on a lot throughout the city, that there's a lot of people that are looking at property that three years ago were worth two fifty, and now are worth four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they're all sort of looking at it being like, you know, what do I do? I think the problem that we're, we're having is that every month, land value seems to be going up. Will it go down at one point? I'm sure it will, who knows when? And the, the one thing I think we definitely should be looking into to make sure that the, so two things, one, that we're doing everything, we're ensuring that we're, we're going through like ethical guidelines, and two, I think we really need to figure out what, what's going on in the assessor's office, because for the last several years, it, it looks like we weren't valuing the property as what it should be. So we should be looking into especially properties that are, you know, they're not single-family homes, or, or multifamily homes, talking about, you know, parcels that have big land size, we can't just look at the number, we, we need to make sure that assessor goes out there, and that somehow they put priority on, on those type of property. And, yeah, no, I think I feel, one of the things that makes me feel comfortable, though, about potentially approving this, is the fact that a lot of work was done in figuring out what the police department would look like, and, and in creating this project.
So just, I guess a couple overriding thoughts. Number one is, kudos to the administration, the mayor's office, for continuing to move on this issue. It's a needed, it's a needed issue, that is the police department and the public safety. We've been talking about it, we've been talking about it, we've been talking about it, and now, it, this is relatively controversial, only because of the reasons we already discussed, right? But, the fact that we are heading in a direction that may provide us an opportunity to make this, once was a pipe dream, a reality, I think is, is very good. So kudos to the administration for not letting the ball drop, working with Northern Essex, working with DCAM, trying to figure that out, working the delegation, trying to find that out. It's a lot of work, and it's not easy. So when I say that, I mean you and the rest of the staff as well, so good job on trying to move that forward. I think the other speakers already made comments that I agree with. You know, it's, it's, it's just the, it's, it's, it's public relations, right? So, the, the person next door to me, and two streets over from me, they'll understand how you buy something for a hundred thousand, and you get seven hundred thousand dollars, six million, that's just, that's a lot of money to a lot of people, and so it's, it's hard to try to contextualize that and say, this is a good deal for the city, and they're like, well, so that's why the ethics letter, the stuff from the city attorney, that stuff is critical, because what you don't want is a disaster. This is a good news story potentially, not a bad news story, so you want to get all that, you want to make, you clear everything, so that you're not getting hit by the negatives on it, and you want to be a positive thing. So, we gotta do what we gotta do to make sure it's all above board, right? So please, 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 get that to us.
Mr. Chair, I think the TV is frozen.
On you, Mr. Piana. I think we're good. So, it's been going on all night for a while, so it's, it's okay. So I think, I think, so, you've done your due diligence, you brought the stuff forward, I don't know what else we could possibly do. I mean, if I was a naysayer, and I was trying to find a negative thing about this, I'm not sure what I would ask you to do, aside of the ethics stuff, and we've gotten, you've got, you went out and you got an evaluation. We've looked at eminent domain, but talking to some other folks, you're still going to get this document back from the eminent plus the legal fees, so that's probably not the best way to go, right? And if we all agree on that, that's probably not even, it's a non-starter, based on what I've heard this evening. So, really, it's between these two reports, and if we're serious about, the only other possible option is we say, let's cool our jets for a little bit, see if the market takes a dive, and then, let's see, you know, but, but then we're, we're rolling the dice. How many more years do we wait? And does the seller say, forget about it, I'm just gonna make housing?
Right.
And then we lose the opportunity, so. So there you have it. I don't know, those are good options, actually. We've been waiting and waiting for a while, so. Is there a, a motion? Anybody want to make a motion?
So, I like...
Or any questions anymore? Okay, go ahead.
I, I'd like to place a motion to bring this up to the full council.
Second motion.
What's your recommendation?
Positive recommendation.
The favorable recommendation has been made, and it's been seconded. Here would no further discussion, I'll call the question. Would you please put a caveat, I'm asking if you wouldn't mind doing that, that we get the, the information from the city attorney's office, ethics commission as well, to make sure that happens, and...
And also the, the report.
Full report.
The full report.
The full report. And I would also like, I would also like a crib sheet on eminent domain, I don't need a, a treatise on it, I just need a one-pager that talks about it, because when a constituent says to me, why don't you do an eminent domain thing? I could say, well, we had a chance to take a look at it, and here's the actual cost, if we go that direction, I could show that to them. All above board. Can you make that a part of the motion?
Yes.
So, we got all that?
Yep.
So, that's part of the motion, before we can vote at the full council, we need to get all that stuff. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
There's no need for a public hearing on this, is that correct? This is a trans, this is a transaction, so we just do it, this is like, like a land sale, like any other purchase, right? Okay, or sale, okay. We're good.
All right, thank you so much.
See you next, next week.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Rionello, you're back up.
So counselors, everybody should have a six-month year-end, sorry, six-month year-end review. There's a multi-page document, for the six-month end to twelve thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, and the, we broke that out into the general fund revenues, and then general fund expenditures, and then there's a, the parking enterprise fund, then the airport enterprise fund, then the water sewer enterprise fund. So I'll just briefly review what we're looking at on page one through page, I think six of your, first six pages of your document, those are the general fund revenues, and they're categorized, categorized by the first one, which is taxes and excise, number forty-one taxes and excise on page one, and that goes through to page two, and we've collected, we're at forty-eight point four percent of our revenue estimate, and then charges for services are generally city, city department collections, or, or city department-related charges, and there's a, that's the next section, and then we go to licenses and permits collected by city departments, then there's federal revenues on page four, state revenues on page five, that's the, it's a hundred million dollars, that's the state aid from the school department, and then we have some other intergovernmental revenues, and some miscellaneous revenues, to round out the general categories that we have for the general fund. The totals for the general fund are on page six, through twelve thirty-one, we've collected a hundred and four, we, our revenues are a hundred and forty million, on two hundred and ninety million dollar year-end, yearly annual estimate. So, roughly forty-eight point five percent received, a little bit short of where we'd like to be, but a few of these revenues who do not, they not, they all do not come in ratably over the fiscal year, so we're, we're okay on that target. The next section of the report are the department expenditures, and it begins on, after the first six pages of revenues, you begin with page one through page seven of, of expenditures, it says general fund expenditures at the, at the top, and on the first page, you'll see the city council budget and their expenditures year-to-date, and their available budget and percent used. So as you can, general government, general government departments are listed first, and that's city council, mayor, budget, finance, city attorney, and so on, and then when we get to page three of the expenditure page, you'll see the police and fire departments, those are the largest expenditures. All of those departments are, the police and fire department are fifty-one point five percent, should be around fifty, but the delta there is they've, we pay out, a hundred percent of the longevity payment is paid out in December, so that's not paid out ratably over the year, so they are trending right on target, even though it looks like they're a little over, they're not. On page four is inspectional services, and then you'll see the school department. The school department, looks like they've expended eighty-eight point seven percent of their budget, but they really haven't. They encumber all of their salaries at the beginning of the year, so included in the percent used is the actual expended and the amount encumbered, which includes all the salaries, so they're really, they really haven't blown their budget, they're, they're on target. Vocational school assessment is the same thing, that's just the grade of Lawrence Technical School assessment that we receive, we encumber it at the beginning of the year, so a hundred percent has been encumbered. Half of it's been paid, the other half will be paid in the next, next six months. Public Works has, is, is the, on page, the bottom of page four, and the total is on page, top of page five, and they're at eighty-seven percent expended, and that is a problem with the public works department, and there's three issues there. Snow and ice, they can deficit spend for snow and ice purposes, they've also had, come to the city council earlier this year, a few months ago, for, well, I guess in the fall, they came down for a windstorm that knocked down a lot of trees, and I think we spent roughly half a million dollars, or, or thereabouts, on that emergency, and then it was an ice storm, I think, just recently, last month, January, I think, with the, with that freeze, a lot of pipes burst, and there was a lot of emergency expenditures we had to take place, so the DBW director followed the master on the laws, came down, identify, had the council vote the emergency, we petitioned the director of the Bureau of Accounts to allow us to deficit spend, we'll have to raise those funds before the end of the year. We will probably plan on, we can either raise that at next year's tax recap, or my recommendation to the city will be to make a transfer out of free cash before the fiscal year closes, so we don't put a burden on next year's tax budget. Let's see, page five is cemetery, council aging, veterans benefits, veterans benefits is one of those, or veteran services, and then benefits are also included. Veterans benefits, we have in the last few years, been down to the council, getting more for... for, putting, getting additional appropriation out of free cash to support our veterans benefits. But so I'm happy to see so far this year, we're at forty-six point six percent of the eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand we budgeted for that line item. So, so it doesn't look like we'll be coming back, at least at this point, for some additional funding for the veterans benefits. So that's, we're mandated to pay those out. And then I think on page six is just the recreation department, the libraries on page six. Debt service is a big number. We don't pay debt service every single month, so that looks like we're sixty percent expended, but the twelve point three million will be expended by June thirtieth and we pay in accordance with the timeline. Our intergovernmental assessments, those are cherry sheet assessments, those are charter and school aid and some other assessments that the state gives us as part of our state aid. They also charge us some, some assessments and those are trending or booked accordingly. So halfway through the year, we're right on target with those. And it just on the very last page of expenditures for the general fund is the employee benefits section, which is the, the intergovernmental one is really the pension, intergovernmental payment between the city and the city's retirement board. We pay that all in one lump sum, so that's ninety-nine point seven percent expended. It's really a hundred percent expended because we paid our entire assessment. And we pay that as, on or about August one. And then the remain, the remaining balance in that account is the other charges and expenses is really our health insurance and we're right at forty-eight point one percent expended in that account. So that's trending on target. So that pretty much brings us to the, a review of the, of the general fund. And in the next page, we begin with the parking enterprise fund revenue and then there's a pager, or there's two pages of parking enterprise fund expenses. So that's, just to review the report, that's kind of how it's put together. So, so far this year, we've, parking garage and lots have taken in four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand and they've expended two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. The air, I'm sorry, they've expended, that's wrong, expended three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. The airport is the next enterprise fund. There's one page of revenues for the airport and then there's two pages of expenditures for, three pages of expenditures for the airport enterprise fund. And that's a separate, separate distinct from the general fund.
What, what, what page is that?
It's, it's, it's the, it's numbered page one, but it's actually-
Okay.
It says it's not, they're not all numbered. But it says at the top, airport enterprise fund revenues. And there's page one of one and then there's airport enterprise fund expenditures is on the next page. And there's three pages of expenditures. And then the largest enterprise fund we have is the water sewer enterprise fund and that's on the, that follows the airport. And again, there's a, it's a little larger fund, so there's two pages of revenues for the enterprise, water and sewer enterprise fund. And then there's six pages of, yeah, six pages of expenditures for the water and sewer enterprise fund. So I just kind of went over that at a very high level, a review. There were, you know, there's a, there's a lot of detail here, but there, I just went over it at a very high level. The purpose of this, putting it on the budget finance agenda is just so that, you know, we're looking at these things on a quarterly basis. This is the six-month end to twelve thirty-one and we like to share that with the city council. We'll be doing it again March thirty-first.
So one more time, because I may have missed it, is, is there any one particular budget item that's concerned to you at this point?
Really, just as I mentioned, the public works department because they've had, they've had the deficit spent for three purposes a year. We, we always deficit spend for snow and ice and we always are allowed to do that. We always come down to the council for that authorization. But this year, we had actually two other emergencies that we had to come down to the council for. As I mentioned, one was a, the DPW director came down for late fall. It was a, a windstorm that took down a lot of trees and we had to spend three to four hundred, maybe five hundred thousand to remove trees that were danger to the public. And then in January, I believe during that deep freeze that we had, a lot of the school buildings had some pipe freezes and we had to put some emerg, expensive emergency funds or seek emergency legislation or seek emergency, not legislation, but we came to the city council, followed the mass general laws and came down to the council, asked your permission to deficit fund those accounts and then petitioned the director of the Bureau of Accounts to authorize us to use any available cash to handle that emergency. Those funds have to be raised on next year's tax recap unless they're early or appropriated. And that's where I mentioned, I do plan on asking, coming down to the city council, my recommendation to mayor will be to come down to the city council before June thirtieth and whatever those deficits are, to use some free cash and wipe those deficits out so we don't burden FY nineteen with the, the emergency expenses of FY eighteen.
Questions, Mr. Piano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a couple of questions. With the vocational school assessment, I know that there's, it sounded like from one of our previous items, there's some type of audit that's being done with the school department. Is there anything like that with the vocational school?
The vocational school is a separate entity. We get an assessment from Greater Lawrence Technical School and where we're required to pay that assessment. So I think that's the two point, yeah, two point four million dollars and we get an assessment. They pass their budget in the fall, just like we do. And then once they pass their budget, because they're a regional school system, they, or they bill all the school systems that are part of that school. So they bill Andover North, Andover Lawrence and Methuen.
So, so my question to that, like I understand sort of the process on how we came up with this number. It's more, it seems like there's a, there's a greater connectivity between the city and Lawrence Public Schools to, to the point where you've been able to address two points that might be of concern to us, that, that might be, that a concern might be created through like their financial process. I'm wondering if there's, there's been a similar audit or there's a similar conversations with the vocational school?
The, I know the vocational school has an audit. I don't have a copy of it, but they're a separate entity, they have to have an audit just like the city has to have an audit. They're required to get a yellow book audit or audit of their federal grants. And I'm sure they have a management letter. So I don't have those, but they're probably available on their website to see what they're, what's going on. But I know they do run a pretty good operation.
My next question is, I, and I might have missed, might have missed it. You were talking about human assistance programs. What are those?
I think I was, I think I mentioned the veteran service department, so let me see. It might be, oh, there's a human assistance, there is a, below on page five of the general fund expenditures. I was talking about the veterans benefits, which are about halfway down to page or, and then the very last section on page five is a human assistance programs. And there's a, I think there's five thousand for, I don't, can't remember what that is, but it's something to do with Martha Velez. I think the thirty thousand has something to do with Martha Velez and the, and there's a budget item we put in for services for the elderly, I think, health services for the elderly. And I think it's the, I'm not sure if it's the Greater Merrimack Valley Elder Services, I think, performs the services and we just fund a piece of it.
Why would it be under this line item and not Council of Aging or something like that?
I think the council on aging is just their operating budget and this is just how we've always listed in the budget. It is a separate line item to vote on. It's not part of Martha Velez's operating budget.
Okay. My last question, I know you spoke a little bit about pensions, but is there, I know that some cities and towns have, like there's certain issues going on as far as that payment of, of pensions. Do you see any concerns with the way that they're currently being handled?
Our pension system?
Yeah.
Again, that's an assessment from the, the Lawrence Contributor Retirement System is the official entity. They're outside this, although it, they service the retirees of the city of Lawrence, it's an entity outside the city of Lawrence. We have, we have representation on the board. The comptroller is the ex officio member on the board. There's two elected, two, there are two elected members of, members of the retirement board, employees of the retirement board or retirees of the retirement board can run for two elective offices. And then there's a mayor's appointee and then the, those four members appoint a fifth member. And that, those are the five members of the retirement board. So they run their own show and they just, based on all our, all our pensions paid out and our, the employees that we have and the people that have already retired, they send us an assessment based on an actuarial valuation of, of what is the actual cost of, of, of the pension system and, and to get us fully funded in the year two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty-two, or we might have dropped to two thousand thirty, it'll be fully funded. And that's the assessment. So our assessment roughly is about, our share of it was about nine million. The school department has a, has a, about a ten million piece and so we pay a little under twenty million per year. The other members in that system, besides the city of Lawrence, are the Greater Lawrence Technical School. It belongs to the city's retirement system and then there's the Merrimack Valley Transit Authority. There's just a few members, they belong to the city's retirement system and, missing one? Lawrence Housing Authority.
Okay.
The employing, those are the employers that fund the retirement system.
Okay, thank you.
Grabby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ryanelli, to follow up on my colleague, Councilor Piano's questioning regarding the pension. In two thousand and thirty-two, we will be fully funded, but that is for the current employees, correct? We will still have an unfunded liability?
We have an unfunded liability now. We will not have one in two thousand thirty-two. We'll be fully funded.
Fully funded going forward and no legacy debt?
That, that's right. In other words, as I just mentioned, we pay roughly, I think our assessment last year from the city side, city and school side was around seventeen million. Out of that seventeen million dollars that we had to, we had to send a check to the retirement system, out of that seventeen million dollars, about fourteen or fifteen million, or at least fourteen million is past service cost. Only two to three million it would be our, normally what we would have to pay. So if we ever were fully funded, we save, you know, on today's basis, it'd be fourteen million dollars. However, as I think Dick Sullivan mentioned in his audit report presentation, we do have this other post-employment benefits liability. So again, this is nationwide. Most communities are dealing with their pension liabilities, which came first and then whatever that, we would be taking that fourteen million and applying it to our OPEB liability and paying that over thirty years, over thirty years to try and get that down to zero. So we're, we're another generation or two away from being debt-free as far as pensions go. And, and just for the, for you and the public at home, I mean, these are, we, we've provided pensions and benefits to our retirees and we didn't fund them. Our, our forefathers did that and we're kind of stuck with the bill. We're paying our fair share because we're paying the past service cost plus our normal cost. So the taxpayers today are paying their fair share. It's just that we're not able to catch up on that past service cost and there's one more liability we aren't paying our fair share on is that, and that's the health insurance, primarily health insurance for retirees. It's extraordinarily expensive. And as, as Dick mentioned, the OPEB liability exceed, far exceeds our pension liability. But we've been working on that pension liability for, I think since nineteen eighty-six or eighty-eight, we started funding that past service cost. So it was designed to be repaid over forty years, but they had to extend it because of such a stock market loss in the early two thousands, two thousand one or, or two thousand three. So they extended the, allowed us to extend it another few years. Since that's happened, the retirement board's taken a vote to reduce, we've reduced it three years, so we're back to, I, I, I don't think it's two thousand thirty-two. Do you know off the top of your head? Two thousand, two thousand thirty-seven is the payback? Okay, so it was two thousand forty. So we took three years off.
Thank you, Mr. Ryanelli. No further questions, Mr. President.
Wherever you are. All right, so I don't have any questions to add to what you've already asked. So what we could do is we could, I, I don't remember what we had done in the past. Do we typically leave this here and then the next quarter comes and we come, they come up? Is that what we've done, Mr. Ryanelli?
I, I think we, I, I think there's no, there's no particular vote to be taken. It's informational purpose only for the budget finance committee and if you want, I think we did provide it to all of the city councilors, so if you want to, it's just informational for, for them.
And you've already, you've already given the rest of the council this information as well?
Yeah, we, we provided the, this packet to all city councilors.
I, I feel comfortable just tabling it here. I know what we're gonna do is just withdraw it at the full council level anyway and that way we can just, when, when the next quarter comes up and you want to come back to us, we already have a standing document.
Yep.
What's it called? Financial review. I actually changed it around, so we will need to send this up, because you do say December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. So, all right, that answers that question. Is there a motion to send it up to the full council without a recommendation?
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. If no further discussion, I'll call the-
Discussion.
Sure.
So this would be moved to the, the full meeting and we would have the same discussion we just had right now?
Maybe, maybe not. It's the councils, I mean, if, we've had it here, so we know what we're talking about. If a counselor sees that and has a question at the full council level, within their rights to go ahead and ask a question.
Okay.
Other than that, we'll probably send it to the full council, make a motion to withdraw and then take it from there. We typically do.
Okay, we haven't, we haven't made a presentation at the full council level. We've always done it here. But, you know, but whatever you vote, we'll be here.
Should this be a motion to withdraw then or?
We're gonna send another recommendation, we're gonna send it like that. We could either way, it doesn't make a difference. I just, when we said, the nuances, we sent it up to the full council with motion to withdraw, it's like we don't want anybody to talk about it and I don't want to send that signal. If somebody has a question on it, certainly they could ask the question at the full council level. So without a recommendation, committee report and then we make a motion to withdraw afterwards, I think it's the-
Sounds fine with me.
-better signal. So a motion's been made, it's been seconded. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda this evening. Mr. Piano?
I, I would like to take, so two things. So one seventy-three sixteen.
Yeah.
I, I would like to take it from being tabled and essentially discuss it at our-
Mr. Ryanelli, could you, don't go so fast if you don't mind. Go ahead, Mr. Piano.
I'm sorry, not that one. Three twenty fifteen, my apologies. So new voting, new voting machines, purchase process. I'd like to move this from it being tabled to a discussion for our next meeting.
Okay.
With a notice to the city clerk and someone from the mayor's office to make sure that they're ready to talk about this issue.
So what we could do, I, I do think it's solely in the purview of the city clerk. Certainly, if, if the, the mayor needs to sign off on, of course, we can't, I don't think initiate-
If I could just add, I just spoke to the, we're preparing a new capital improvement plan for the city council, it'll be submitted on or about May one.
So motion to take document three twenty off the table, fifteen?
So moved.
Motion made, second. All in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Go ahead, Mr. Ryanelli.
Okay. And the city clerk has, has put in his capital plan request, new voting machines and other things. So that'll be part of the capital improvement plan that'll be coming down here or, or it's presented to the mayor, whether it goes, gets through the mayor's process and gets down here. But it is something he is submitting, so that's starting the discussion. If there's, if the city council wants to do something on its behalf, we will be putting together a capital improvement plan.
So that's on the list and the mayor's going through the list?
It's on the list. He's going through the list, see what we can afford. You know, I think he's, he's put, I think his request was for all new voting machines and I think our first initial response would be to try and do a, you know, can we phase it in? Do we have to do it all? So that'll be part of the back and forth when departments come in with their, with their requests, they have to justify them, so.
Okay.
He's got a, he has a long memo, as Mr. Maloney does. He's got a detailed memos to why he needs it. So that was submitted with his capital improvement request, which department submitted them just this, they were due Wednesday, so he got his in on time.
Has that changed your posture at all, Mr. Piano or not?
So, no. So I mean, I, I like the fact that we're moving along with this, Mr. Chair, but I think it's a, a discussion that should be had with us, you know, out in the open. I know that in years past, even, you know, in last year's elections, there's always machines that are breaking down. These machines are plus twenty- machines that are breaking down, these machines are plus 20 years, so I want to make sure that I see what it is that the city's doing on that behalf, and, and not just, you know, I understand that it's within the city clerk's department, but the reason I said that, it'd be great to have someone for the mayor's office, is to get the perspective, but since the discussion is being had, I would change my original motion just to have a notice being sent out to the, to the clerk, to make sure that he's here and able to comment on this.
So, we're going to, can we just make a request for the city clerk to be here at the next Budget and Finance, if you're prepared to speak on document 32015? I don't think there's any objection to that, is there? No, none, that's, let's just do that. Okay, and other than that, we're just going to retable this, is there a motion to retable?
So moved.
Motion made, and second, all in favor say aye, the ayes have it. So we'll have this item at the next, discussion at the next Budget Finance Committee meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Something else I'd like to?
Sure.
Item 9814, all licenses and permits, review fees, I would like to sort of discuss that briefly.
What's that? What's that?
9814, motion to take 9814 off the table.
So moved.
Motion made, and seconded, all in favor say aye, the ayes have it. Mr. Piano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I've been in discussions with President Vasquez, you know, we have, within our ordinances, we have a list of fees and even some punitive damages that are, you know, were made in the early 90s. So for example, within, within our housing code, if you have someone who's a slumlord, someone who's not doing what's right with a tenant, in the early 90s, the City Council put in a penalty of $300. If we took, you know, inflation into account, that 300 is actually five, above $500. So, you know, the instance that we have now is that some people are being hit with $300 per, per wrongdoing, and it doesn't hurt their pocket that much. You know, and again, you know, there's certain fees that we put in place years ago, that I think should be reevaluated, and not necessarily that the fee should be increased because we think that we should charge more, but to ensure that it's at the rate of inflation. So, but before we worked on a project like that, President Vasquez thought it would be good to sort of briefly have this discussion here, and just to see, you know, get an instance of what the, the members of this committee thought about something like that.
Okay, so your proposal, I mean, Mr. Ryanello's here, it's probably, it's probably night to do it this evening, I'm not sure he's prepared to go into as much detail as you might like.
So, so it's not a, a proposal as in that I'm ready to submit something right now, it's, it's more of a question of what is the general thought behind something like this? You know, is there a feeling that, you know, even though these fees are 20-something-plus years old, that they should remain the same, or should work be done to try to ensure that they, that they're standard with sort of like the value of this year?
So one of the things that we've learned being on the council for a few of these sessions is the following, number one, there's mass general laws that has a statutory limit as to how much we can go ahead and fine on certain cases, for example, illegal dumping, I think, I think the statute says 300 or 350, something like that, and oftentimes we've maxed out on a lot of them. We actually had a home rule petition for the illegal dumping bill that became law, that we were able to exceed that, but that took a home rule petition, passed by the legislature, and signed by the governor to make happen.
It's a state law?
It's a home rule petition, so we have to change essentially this, the state, the state legislature and governor gives us permission to go beyond the law, so we're actually creating, if you will, a state law to allow us in that particular one. Dog licenses, if you don't have it, you're fined, was it $25, fined 50, you certainly could do that. I think the, I like what you're suggesting with respect to the, the fact that it's not punitive enough, keeping in mind, I'm in the enforcement business during my day job, the idea behind these penalties is to change behaviors. That's all we're trying to do, we want people to change behaviors, we're not looking to make money, which is your good point, we just want to make sure people are, are doing the, the things that we want to do as a society, to go down the proper path. So, if it's as simple as making sure Fido, the dog, has got a little sticker around his neck, and no one's paying attention to that, sometimes you need to ratchet it up to get someone's attention. You just want to make sure people are obeying all the laws, or else why have the laws if they're on the books, right?
Exactly.
So, we certainly can have a further discussion on this, I, I, I think the best course of action is to get a list of the various ordinances, and then the list of the, what the, what the, what the penalties are for an infraction.
Okay.
And then you can work, we can, you or us, we can work off that sheet, and see where are we maxed out, where are we not maxed out, what do we need to work on, and see what abilities we have to make change, if any. We might, it, it's, it's a Herculean task oftentimes to do a home rule petition, it's time-consuming, it's not as easy, it's just us meeting together and having, we've got to get to the legislature, and, and the whole committee pro, you know this process, so it's not easy. Is that helpful at all?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, I'm not sure you want to proceed on it, but I'll support whatever you're looking to do.
Okay. So, motion to table this?
Okay, motion to table, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else? Nope, okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.